Okay, let's just give it a half a minute to let folks come in.
All right, Mayor, I think anyone who was waiting to join is in.
Okay, very good. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 5th, 2022. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune, an email to the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on July 29th, 2022, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on July 29th, 2022, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As Mayor, I preside over this council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided for each participant for public comment or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Okay, Council President Phil George, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mayor. The United States of America and to the Republic.
The Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, visible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bremmeltler?
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster?
Does he have to unmute?
Here.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Hale?
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Emma Von Thum?
Here.
All right, and we also have with us today our planner Chris Costenza and our redevelopment attorneys Joseph Baumann and Nick Strasser.
Thank you, Mayor.
Before I get to agenda questions for council members, there was a request to add Resolution 822 to 10 to apply for the American Rescue Plan firefighter grant from the NJDCA. Can I have a motion to add said resolution into the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion to add.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster?
Here.
Yes. Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Council President Phil George, can I call upon you to please read the Resolution 822 to 10 into the record?
Yes, Mayor, I just want to note for the public, this resolution was added simply because there's a grant deadline for American Rescue Plan money for fire departments, and we need to get the grant out. So I'll read it. Resolution from the Public Safety Committee, and thank you, Councilwoman Foster, for your help. Whereas the Fire Department wishes to purchase new turnout gear, cleaning, and sanitization equipment to ensure they are properly protected against combined threats of COVID-19 and the strain of emergency fire requests, and whereas the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, the NDCA, NJDCA, has appropriated funds from the American Rescue Plan for this purpose, thou therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park that the mayor and Borough Clerk are authorized and directed to execute and submit on behalf of the Fire Department the grant application to DCA, and be it resolved that the mayor and the Borough Clerk are authorized to sign the grant agreement upon acceptance on behalf of the Borough of Highland Park, and that their signature constitutes acceptance of the terms and conditions and approves the execution of the grant agreement.
Thank you, Council President. And now, does does anyone have any additional questions for the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I get to do one of the things I like best about being mayor, and that is to congratulate one of our residents who has been so involved in our community for years and years. This is a proclamation I'm issuing to Ms. Sheila Highsmith. Whereas Sheila Highsmith has deep roots in Middlesex County and Highland Park, having graduated from New Brunswick Senior High School, the Drake College of Business in New Brunswick, and later the School of Social Work at Rutgers University, New Brunswick, where she received a Master's in Administration Policy and Planning in Social Work degree. Whereas Sheila lived in Highland Park with her family from 1968 to 1976 and returned to Highland Park in 2000 to attend the School of Social Work, she got deeply involved in the community, chairing the Human Relations Committee for nearly 10 years, helping cofound Highland Park Gives a Hoot, serving on the Mayor's Wellness Committee and the Main Street Highland Park Public Access Committee, and participating in the Reformed Church of Highland Park's efforts to fight unlawful ICE raids. Presently, she is the sixth district representative for the Highland Park Democratic Municipal Committee and a member of the CDBG Committee. Whereas Sheila had made many contributions in her varied volunteer roles in the borough and has received much recognition for her efforts, including the Unity Bank Highland Park Chamber of Commerce Award in 2008 for Community Excellence and the Diversity Champion Award from the American Conference Community Central Chapter in May 2012 for fostering community unity and promoting understanding and awareness of the uniqueness of each individual in the borough of Highland Park. Whereas Sheila has led a varied and impressive career that has included stints as a fashion model, dance choreographer, journalist, New Jersey Community Choir member, administrative assistant for the Boy Scouts of America, program coordinator at Community Access Unlimited Residential Program, community resource specialist, forensic psychiatric social worker in the New Jersey State Department of Human Services, and most recently, Assistant Social Work Supervisor for the New Jersey State Department of Health. Whereas Sheila Highsmith has been an exemplary volunteer in Highland Park and a role model of a professional who is always building her skills and expanding her level of service to her church, her community, and the state of New Jersey. Now, therefore, I, Gail Bremmeltler, Mayor of Highland Park, do hereby recognize Sheila's many, many accomplishments on the occasion of her retirement from service to the state of New Jersey and wish her much good health, success, and satisfaction in the next stage of her adventurous life. Thank you, Sheila, for all that you've done for Highland Park. Okay. We're going to go into our council reports at this time. And so I'm going to go in order of how you appear on my screen. Councilwoman Tara Canavera, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate Sheila. She was actually the person who got me started on my volunteer journey here in Highland Park. So congratulations. August is National Family Fun Month. It's a perfect reminder to take a break and have some carefree family fun here in town. The Board of Health wants to remind everyone that while May, June, July are considered the prime months for ticks, they still are a very major issue right now, and please be careful and check yourself and your pets and children for ticks after being outside. As we all know, food security is still high. We have two programs, the Community Food Pantry, which is open the second and fourth Thursday, 9:00 AM to 10:45 AM, and 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and the Saturday after that Thursday, 9:30 AM to 10:30 AM. Donations can be made using their Amazon wishlist. Highland Park Gives a Hoot Food Pantry is open every Tuesdays from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Donations can be made by mailing a check to the Borough Hall with a memo that is for the Highland Park Gives a Hoot. They also are taking donations at the Zone 16 Center. Mental Health Commission wants everybody to remember that anyone with a mental health crisis, please reach out for help. The National Suicide Prevention Lifeline for Mental Health Crisis has changed to a three-digit number, 988. Middlesex County Crisis Hotlines include Rutgers University Behavioral Health. Their hotline number is 855-515-5700. Raritan Bay Medical Center's hotline is 732-442-3794, or you can also text HOME, H-O-M, to 741-741 for immediate response. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Matt Hale, do you have a report?
I do, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I wanted to remind everybody that on September 11th coming up is Highland Park's Annual Arts in the Park Street Fair. This is a great event, a time to stock up and shop for gifts, as well as eat a lot of food and listen to local music. That's September 11th coming up right on Raritan Ave. Also this week, this, every Friday until then and past then are the farmers' markets. Again, one of the best events in all of Highland Park every Friday, so please come out and support the farmers' market. Real quick, tonight, we're going to vote on naming Garden Homes as a conditional redeveloper as part of our redevelopment plan. This is an exciting first step, real first concrete step to bring about downtown redevelopment. There's lots of work ahead, there's lots of negotiations, there's lots of work as this conditional redevelopment agreement plays itself out, but it's a step to get underway, and I think it's important to remember that, especially given a lot of the uncertainty that we've seen or a lot of the feelings that we've had about the possibility of Stop and Shop closing and safe drugs closing. I know that's nerve-wracking for many people. I just want to assure everybody and that the borough is working very, very hard on both of those to make sure that we have a solid grocery store and we have solid development in downtown. I want to particularly thank Main Street Highland Park for sort of jumping on along with the mayor, who's been fantastic in reaching out to Stop and Shop and other businesses. So this is a lot of change coming on, but I want to thank both Main Street and the mayor for their hard work in helping us see this through. And along those lines, I wanted to give a shout-out to our Assistant Borough Administrator, Emma Von Thum, who is very shortly going to go out on maternity leave. I'm hoping that the borough will be here when she gets back because she's really been a fantastic addition to Highland Park, particularly to the Neighborhood Preservation Program. It's, we're seeing fruit from that, from her efforts and her work. So she's still with us for a little bit longer, but she will be headed out on maternity leave, and I just want to say congratulations and thank you to all that she's done and come back soon. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Foster, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. It's that time again, National Night Out. National Night Out is coming next Tuesday, and this year it will be held like we have in the past over at Urban School. It starts at 6:00 PM, and it's going to be in the Urban School playground, so come out and enjoy a wonderful evening. Local family, friends, police officers, come out and have a good time. It promises to be great. On that, also, we just finished up the Highland Park Police Department, just finished up the Youth Academy. It was a huge success, as usual. The kids were excited because they did a lot of CSI. The state helicopter came in. They got to see the rescue boat that came up from Rutgers, and they had visits from the Marshal's Office, and they worked on some bias crime issues. And they also had a mock investigation. They had a mock investigation where they had to be little detectives and put on their best detective hat to figure out how to solve problems, how to solve crimes, and how to be a good investigator. So they had a great time, and congratulations to all that attended and all who graduated. I hope you put those skills into good use as you move on, and we're looking forward to next year's Youth Academy. The next one, and I'm really excited about, is an ongoing project. It's something that the Police Department and SWAC has been working on for some time now, and that is the Street Smart Awareness Program. We're going to be kicking that program off on September 9th, and it will be on Main Street, at the Susan Wolkovitz Pavilion. It's going to be, how do we keep each other safe? You know, I always come on here and go look up when you're crossing the street, pay attention, focus, and it's a whole awareness program to tell people to be aware when they're crossing the street to do street safety as they go about their day-to-day and what they do and they don't. So it's going to be a whole rollout of a program. We're going to have members, we're going to have folks from the Commissioner's office. I think Commissioner Kenny's going to be here. We're going to have some state representative, and of course, our own mayor and Councilmember Hirsch is going to be here as well because he's been working on this program with SWAC for some time now. It's a leftover from Susie, and it's so fitting that we're doing it at the Susan Wolkovitz Pavilion because Susie was very passionate about SWAC. Even before she came on council, she was really infused and passionate to be working with this program. So I think it's so fitted that we're having something there. And thanks, Matt, for pushing it through. You never let it go. You took that on bigger, too, and you just really, really made it work. And we've partnered on this, and I think that we made a good team, and this is coming to fruition where we're actually going to see some good work coming out of this. And just my reminder, as usual, to be aware of your surroundings, to lock your car. Please do not leave your car open. To wear your helmet when you're on your bikes, on your scooter, and always, always, always practice public safety. We're coming, we're in the throes of our summer, and we want everyone to be safe. So please practice your best safety precaution as you go about, and especially on these hot days, stay hydrated. And our cooling centers are open for anybody who may need it. That's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, Mayor, just real quick, a few weeks ago, the governor announced the property tax relief program that's going to help about 1.8 million New Jersey households. It's replacing the homestead benefit program that we have here in town. So I'm just going to go through it real quick. So homeowners that's making up to $250,000 will be eligible to receive an average of $700 rebate within the first year. And also, the program included renters this time. So renters making up to $100,000 will be eligible for rebate of the $250 to offset causes of rent increases as well. And this would apply to about 1.1 million homeowners and 600,000 renters in New Jersey. The thing is, so when you go over to the tax office, you have to apply for this program. It isn't something automatic, like stimulus, you wake up, you have money, you have to apply. And the tax, the tax, the tax office will have applications there and will help any residents that's interested in this program the same way that they assisted in the homestead benefit program as well, too, which those applications are still at their office there as well, too. I do want to just mention that. And also, I want to thank Main Street Highland Park for inviting me to their gazpacho contests. I really enjoyed that last year. I participated in the squash muffin contest, but I think the gazpacho one was really better, and I enjoyed it a lot. I enjoyed it. I mean, nothing wrong with anyone's muffins in town, but I like gazpacho. And so thanks. Invite me again. I know, I know. Invite Matt Hirsch to the squash muffin. Yeah, and the pie. And that's my report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. And Councilwoman, if you could get more information on that program you were talking about to Harry Glazer so that he can get some communication out to our residents about it and how they have to come to Borough Hall, I think that would be important. Thank you.
Well, they're rolling the funds, they rolled it out, it will be next year. But I just wanted to get people on that, but I'll still send it over.
Great, thank you. And Councilman Hirsch, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, and I apologize, I'm having some technical difficulties on my end. So does my video look okay?
Yes.
I had to reboot there for a minute. I don't have a very long, I don't have much to report tonight. I would just like to remind everybody that the Hi, I'm Matt Hirsch, I chair the Borough's Arts and Recreation Committee. The Department of Recreation oversees the Park Stock Summer Series, which started off successfully, has had two shows. The Do Rights, a great jazz soul and punk band played last week. And we were set to have Haye Bulldog, which is a Beatles cover band, but they play the songs really like their own, and they're just amazing professional musicians. They were slated to play this Thursday, but that show has been postponed because of the hot weather. May as well have it on a normal August day, maybe in, you know, high 80s. So that's been postponed to August 18th. It's at the, it's in Grove One at Donaldson Park where the gazebo is. It's well shaded, but just remember to hydrate, wear sunscreen, and wear a hat and enjoy. These are some terrific musicians that the borough has made arrangements with, and I just want to thank local musicians Sheila Shukla and Gary Kaplan and Kim McGraw from REC for all their hard work on getting this really exciting program underway and exciting and well-attended, and we look forward to expanding it next year. So that is everything else you can check out on Facebook, but that is my report right now because I cannot leave my file, so I will give it to Jennifer, and anybody who wants to read her report can read the rest of it in the minutes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council President Phil George, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor, thank you. First of all, we will, following up on Councilman Hale's advising that we're going back to Arts in the Park on September 11th, the following week, I believe, is the Townwide Yard Sale. Right after that, we, DPW, will be reinstituting bulk trash pickups by reservation for the fall. We will, during that week after the street fair, we will not have appointments because we'll be picking up townwide, which we do every year. A lot of what doesn't get sold during the yard sale ends up on the curb. It takes us a good four days to actually do that cleanup, so we'll be doing that. However, after that, we'll be commencing it. We are moving into the second phase, stage of possible, sorry, recycling along Raritan Ave and Woodbridge using our newer equipment, the one our Bandits, and using Toters, we've moved into the second phase due to the great work of our Borough Administrator, Terry Hovier, and the Committee on Public Works. We found the money to actually finance the Toters from the prior capital that we had planned when we went to Phase Two, when we added our second one, our Bandit truck, which will cover the cost of the Toters and a little bit more for spare parts. Right now, we're in the process. We have a good handle on the commercial properties and what we need. We're working on the amount of Toters and also the process because the residential tenants along Raritan and Woodbridge will be included as well. And we don't have as good a handle on that, but we're working on that, and we're hoping, we're looking at a rollout in October, and we're planning that, so it is not definite yet, but we're planning, simply because there are so many scheduling problems in September that change our availability of the crews. So follow us along with that, we'll be rolling more out on that. I don't want to go too far into it, but because I was not there at the meeting, but the PSENG had their pre-meeting for the paving programs yesterday. My understanding from the news that we got at the Public Works Meeting on Thursday is that their high priority is to do the roads around Bartle School so that they're done in more than enough time to allow free access to the school when it opens. With regard to the Meadows Trail, Alan Williams communicated with me the National Science Foundation grant to Rutgers for some student, grad students, to do a study of the tick population and the problems in a lot of our public areas, especially the Meadows Trail and the Native Plant Sanctuary. Looking at the prospectus, they're actually doing quite a lot of testing, capturing of samples because they're looking, and it's a county-wide project, but they're focusing on our Meadows Trail and Native Plant Sanctuary as one of the riverfront areas where the deer tend to congregate, which is one common perception of the tick problem, to determine what exactly are problems. They're actually doing, they will be doing laboratory studies on the samples to assure us, you know, of the safety levels of what we have. And finally, later during the work session, we'll hear a brief discussion of the Sustainable Highland Park's Adopt a Dream program, which is in place, just so people understand what the nature of the engagement in that project is. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Emma, if you're in the background, do you have a report for the Borough Administrator?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I do have a brief report. So Matt Hirsch and I share our enthusiasm for our new Park Stock program. It's Highland Park's own music festival, and it's been in full swing since July. It's really so wonderful to see so many people from our community and neighbors enjoying the music in our own Donaldson Park while we are still, while we're also able to promote and feature our own local bands. As Councilman Hirsch said, this Thursday's performance by Haye Bulldog is being postponed. But Park Stock is just one of the ways in which Highland Park continues to gain the reputation as the place to be for music and arts in Middlesex County. I want to give a big shout-out, as Councilman Hirsch did, to our friends at the HP REC Department for pulling this summer-long event together. We really gave them a challenge to make it happen, and they really came through. So once again, I want to thank them, and I'm hoping that Park Stock becomes a regular summer music So uh, once again, I want to thank them and I'm hoping that Park Stock becomes a regular summer music festival for Highland Park. Um, I do want to uh just say one quick thing before going on about Stop &amp; Shop. Um, I want you to know that I know we need a supermarket in town. So I am not giving up on this, whether it's Stop &amp; Shop or any of the several other supermarkets or their representatives have, who have already reached out to me. Um, we're gonna turn this lemon into lemonade in one way or another. Um, so I, I ask that all our residents just be patient. Um, uh, we are continuing, as Councilman Hale said, in, with our discussions with Stop &amp; Shop corporate, but I'm also opening up the doors to any other grocery store that wants to become a part of Highland Park. So we're using this as a creative opportunity. Um, and I, I'm looking forward to see what the lemonade looks like when we're done with this. Okay, it's now time for our public participation number one. Um, total time allotted is twenty-one minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items that are on the agenda. If you want to speak on an item that is not listed on tonight's agenda, please do so at the second public comment session, which is later in the meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is thirty seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the raise hand button on this application. Please press star six to unmute yourself. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now.
Mayor, first up, we have Peter Spool.
Okay. Peter?
Hi, uh, this is Peter Spool. I'm at one forty-six Graham Street in Highland Park. Um, I, I'd like to ask some questions about a resolution that is on the agenda, naming Garden Homes as a conditional redeveloper of Track C. That's a rather brief um resolution. It, it doesn't state what that means or upon what information um it's based. It would be nice for the, well, more than nice, it, it's important for the residents in order to have informed position, uh, opinions about this and to speak on it um intelligently, to have further information about this. So could you elaborate, please, what that means and how you arrived at that conclusion?
Certainly, Peter. There was an RFP that went out asking for developers to send, send in their um proposals for development on any one of the four lots that are in our redevelopment plan.
Could you be specific about this particular one?
Yes, um, and so um, the Lot C is the gravel lot that is um where um uh the Borough owns a, a parking lot next to the Reformed Church. And um that particular lot, what, because we have control of the property, um, it was decided that it would be the best one for us to start with. And so there were a series of uh proposals that were sent in. Um, and each of them were reviewed and presented to the redevelopment committee. I'm going to ask um our redevelopment attorney, Joe Baumann, if he'd like to be a little more specific on that. I don't want to leave anything out.
Could you start with my first question? What does it mean to be a conditional redeveloper?
Yeah, so, so um I don't want to bring you the lead here. Uh, hi, hi, Mr. Spool. We had a, we had a public meeting at the last meeting.
Yes.
About the whole process that introduced the public to this conditional developer that talks about why they were chosen. It was, it was very in-depth presentation. I just want to
And it was all public, as, as the councilman said.
Are there, are there amendments that I can see?
You can watch it on YouTube.
Okay, hang on, everybody. Joe, I did ask if you would
Sure, sure, yeah. So, uh, Mr. Spool, yes, um, that, we had a very robust meeting. We introduced Garden Homes. They explained their qualifications and their experience. They described other projects that they've done and uh we introduced them as one of the proposers for um the tract that the mayor just described. We also explained at that meeting that the governing body was going to consider tonight a resolution authorizing a conditional redevelopers agreement. Um, and we described at that meeting what that is. So I'll, I'll do it again for you today. Um, so the conditional redeveloper uh is an agreement that provides fundamentally two things. One, it's a one-hundred-and-eighty-day negotiating period during which we will negotiate with Garden Homes for a redevelopment agreement and any other ancillary agreements related to our Track C. And then secondly, it also requires the redeveloper to fund an escrow account. Uh, it's a revolving account starting at twenty-five thousand dollars. That if it dips below, uh, I think it's ten, it goes back up to fifteen and it continues to be replenished for the purpose of, uh, from this moment on, uh, picking up the Borough's expenses as a part of that negotiation.
Thank you, Joe. And also, Peter, just um, so you know, there should be the video of the meeting um on YouTube, I think is where they put it. But you can certainly feel free to call the office tomorrow and get the exact location of the meeting for you to see for yourself.
Thank you.
Uh, Council President Phil George.
Uh, uh, just briefly, uh, Mayor, um, Mr. Baumann and Mr. Hirsch have, have a, a Councilman Hirsch have addressed it. Uh, just in the interest of transparency, I note that the uh, the, the, the draft agreement itself has been posted on, online. It's actually on the Borough website under uh tonight's agenda, posted under Borough Council Meetings.
Thank you. And Councilman Hirsch?
Thank you. Um, and I just, not to, not to humble brag, just, just some best practices. Um, I shared the, the news of the redevelopment um, uh, uh, meeting and the YouTube video um with my boards and commissions. Um, and I would suggest that everybody else do the same.
Thank you. Okay, Emma, do we have another uh hand?
We do. Next up is gonna be Carl Prey.
Hello? Hello. Hi. Mary Forsberg, uh, three seventeen Denison Street. Um, I, I have, I have basically two areas that I'm interested in. One is uh the redevelopment plan, of course. And um, a lot of people I know tried to sign on to the meetings who are very upset when they got on there forty-five, forty minutes late and found that there was no meeting. So it was not, I wouldn't exactly call it a robust meeting. It was thirty-five meeting, minute meeting where you basically introduced what you kind of touted as sort of a mom and pop shop. And I Googled Garden Homes, which owns, owns and manages fifty thousand apartments and has over twenty-five million square feet of retail office and hotel space, over five thousand employees, and it generates almost five hundred million dollars in sales and has twenty-six companies in its corporate family. So you kind of made it look like we were talking to a little mom and pop shop that was gonna be, you know, Highland Park was going to be in a serious position to negotiate with this company, which does not, to me, seem, seem the case. Um, but I'm curious, the other thing I'm really curious about is, what did you tell people? You gave them, um, you issued an RFP um on Track C. I was just recently, I just looked today at the um, um, plan that you passed. Uh, and it includes the two thousand and five redevelopment plan, which is quite different than the two thousand and twenty-one development plan, which is also very different from the December two thousand and nineteen master plan. So I'm really curious what parameters you have uh provided to this sweet little mom and pop company. And, and, and who's, who owns that property? Highland Park owns that property. So how does that translate into working with this company? Do they buy the property? And if so, how do you determine what, what fair market value is for that property?
Okay, Mary, you have a lot of questions in there. I'm going to ask our Borough Attorney, who raised his hand and handles our redevelopment, to, to answer your question, Joseph.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor. First, um, your characterization of our description of Garden Homes couldn't have been further from accurate. Um, we, we just, we touted Garden Homes as a national uh company with breadth and depth that would be a great partner to us, not a mom and pop. We did describe how it was a family business, uh, but we didn't mean by saying it was family that it was small. It's very significant and very experienced and that's one of the many, many reasons we uh recommended we negotiate with them. Um, that's first thing. Second thing, yes, we own the land um as part of their, the RFP. Um, they had to do a number of things, including proposing an appropriate purchase price for our land, which will be all part of our negotiations.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick follow-up question?
Um, I, I'd have to ask the
I'll come back. Okay, bye.
Okay, is there somebody, another hand up?
Yes, we have uh Grizina Australia.
Please unmute.
Yes, um, Grizina Australia, uh, twenty-four Red Cliff Avenue, apartment two C. Um, my, my question is on, of course, um, the, the redevelopment and, and whereas I'm sure this is a lovely developer. Um, I, again, would like to state for the public record, please, don't redevelop this. Yes, I know, Matt, I'm sorry. But, but uh just please, please don't. Of course, it's ripe for redevelopment because a public square has to be in the middle of everything. Um, and I'm concerned about trying to replace it on South Third um by, by getting access to the Raid Aid parking lot. Have we spoken to Raid Aid about that? Um, so I have all manner of concerns. I think possibly I didn't do as much research as the last person, but possibly a great developer, just, I would like to get the replacement public space in before we get rid of our existing, because we have a lot of momentum with the Rot Fest, with the farmers market, and it would be a shame to shut that down for a year or two and then have to start from scratch all over again. Um, and the outdoor movie theater wouldn't work as well on South Third because there are residences much, much closer. So that's, that's my two cents. Please, 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 please don't take the public space. Thank you.
Okay, do we have uh another hand?
Uh, we have Carl Prey's hand up again.
Okay, Mary? Are you there?
Yes, I am. Yep.
Just make your name and address again.
Barry Forsberg, three seventeen Denison Street.
Thank you.
Um, I, I am, uh, my, my, my professional background is as a finance person, public finance in particular, and I am extremely interested in the pilot that you provided to Garden Homes for um uh for Thirty-One River Road. Uh, and I am really concerned with the enormous amount of space that um Garden Homes is potentially going to take, what kind of pilot Highland Park is going to give to them. I, in, in sort of a separate question, I am curious where the pilot payment, the hundred thousand dollars, instead of the actual more appropriate property tax calculation, um, where the hundred thousand dollars shows up in the um, in the Borough's budget. I kind of looked for it, but I didn't see it. I think, think um Thirty-One River Road got the first pilot payment that the Boroughs offered to anybody that I know of.
Okay. Um, I, I'm, I see you raising your hand again.
Well, I, I'm not the finance person at the, at the Borough, but I'm pretty sure it's, it doesn't have, show as a separate line item on the revenues. It's part of the taxes collected. So I don't think it shows up in the budget as a, as a discreet line item.
Where, where does it show up?
It's part of the revenue.
Any place?
It's part of regular revenue. It doesn't show up as a separate line item. It's part of, of regular, regular tax revenue.
Yeah.
I think that is really inappropriate.
No, it's standard operating procedure.
Well, what about any pilot that you might offer?
They are all treated the same.
They are all what?
They're all treated the same throughout New Jersey.
Well, I, I actually used to be in charge of uh one of the pilot programs that the state paid to uh municipalities for municipal government, and that was, that was a discreet line in everybody's budget until it got merged.
Okay, so
Really different animal, but anyway, so
Yeah, yeah, and um, you know, if, if you want to discuss this further with uh Councilwoman Stephanie Kim Tohan, she is the Finance um Chair of the Council. Um, I'm sure she'll be happy to hear what you have to say and show you how it really works. Okay, do we have any other questions? Or hands?
Yes, there's Neil Feen.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Neil.
My name is Neil Fine. Um, I have rented in town for over twelve years. I just bought a house on Dartmouth in the Triangle. Uh, one of the things I love about this town is the farmer's market in downtown area, the community. And I'm gonna be very upset, I'm already very upset that that's being taken away from us and there's really no replacement that makes any kind of sense. The Raid Aid parking lot, South Third, none of these make sense. And I really think that this should be taken to a townwide referendum, whether or not we sell off this property and possibly get rid of the farmer's market for all time. I am a longtime Highland Parker. I'm not going anywhere. I am currently biking with a cargo trailer across town. And please reconsider selling off this property. I think it goes against the spirit of what Highland Park is about. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, there's also Randy Solomon.
Okay. Randy, can you unmute yourself and give us your name and address?
Randy Solomon, three thirty-one Felton Avenue. Um, so I'm, I'm glad to see the town moving forward with the redevelopment. Uh, I just want to say that, um, I think one of the biggest issues that we face is um, you know, wanting to increase taxes and, and vibrancy downtown. And to do that, we need better store structures that the retailers want to buy and we need people that actually live right downtown. And I think this is definitely a step in the right direction. Um, I share the concern over the farmer's market, although I definitely think that South Third could be a suitable replacement if it's done right, and that's an open question. Um, so I just wanted to say that. And one other point, and this is a question. Um, I note that a lot of municipalities that are taking redevelopment seriously and have similar issues to us, like Mutetchen, have um vacant properties ordinances that essentially penalize landlords if they have properties that are vacant for a long time. Uh, certainly a problem we have. Um, is there a reason why we don't have one or is the council considering such an ordinance? And uh, if not, why not?
So Randy, we have, um, I, I've raised it a couple of times myself. I know several council members have, and it is something we are talking about.
That's okay. Great. Um, I'd definitely like to learn more when it's appropriate.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Emma, any other hands?
Uh, yes, there's um Alexis Thomason.
Okay.
Hello, how are you guys?
Good.
Hi Alexis. Hi, um, I'm Alexis Thomason. I live at one fifty-five Exeter Street. And uh, um, this past week, I did write to uh Mayor Mittler and to uh Councilman Hirsch and also to Jenny Chapman at uh Main Street Highland Park um with my crazy idea that uh we turn the farmer's market, Track C, into a municipal partial open-air market. Um, and I think that's something we should consider. I think that the neighborhood would really like that. I think it would be something that would do well here. It's something that has already sprung up sort of organically. And a open air market, a, you know, like I was just in Montreal. So I've got dreams of the Jean Talon market. And if they can do it in Montreal, which is quite cold, three quarters of the year, then we could do it here. You know, it could be open most days or every day. We could have more businesses come in. It would be a nice place to seed some businesses and it would be something that was here daily. So it would be bringing people into the neighborhood every day, attracting more people to the neighborhood. Yes, I agree that we need some more living spaces downtown. And I also agree that we should be talking about having ordinances to stop the vacancies. Landlords cannot be sitting on property, totally agree. But the farmer's market, we all agree that it is beloved. And I think we should build on it. And let's not let some crazy developers get their hands on it. Please, 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 please municipal market. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alexis. Okay, any other hands?
Uh, is there time for more?
I, I'm waiting for Jen to tell us when we have time. Or somebody.
How many people was that?
I'm, I'm sorry?
I'm just, Jen, do you know how many people that was?
Yeah, we can keep going.
Okay, okay. Next up, we have Harold Sacrowitz.
Hi, I, I think I'm on muted.
Yes, we can hear you.
I was not able to get
Harold, I need you to stay
Oh, yeah, Harold Sacrowitz, six seventeen South Fifth Avenue.
Thank you.
And so I was not able to make that last meeting. But I was wondering if at that time you managed to somehow hook up this new proposal with the parking. As they're going to be, of course, way at the beginning, my understanding had been you were going to try to get all the different pieces together and that all depended on the parking gap. So doesn't the parking gap have to go, or at least part of it go up first?
So that's, that's a very good question, Harold. Um, what, we were originally, Matt, did you want to, I saw your hand up.
He did, Joe.
Yeah, yeah.
Joe.
Yeah, so, um, we're, if you weren't at the last meeting, I'll say this for the public who weren't there. So the governing body understands that, um, we're going to be going into a process where we're doing negotiations. And it's really important that we do this in a confidential nature. So as a result, we're not able to answer all the questions that people would like to have answered, like the purchase price of the property, how the parking is going to get handled, the actual redevelopment project. But we will make sure that once we, as we work through that process at the appropriate time, when it's, when we, when we can reveal that information without jeopardizing our responsibility to the municipality to make sure we do a good job negotiating. And part of negotiating, doing a good job is to, uh, not let the other bidders who may have bid on this project, who we may turn to if we don't fail, know about our, our process. Um, it also, uh, may mean that we're going to have conference conversations among ourselves. So we don't want our designated redevelopment developer to hear about. So it has to be by definition in order to do a good job for the public, um, confidential. But along the way, we will certainly reveal that. So things like the parking is absolutely going to get addressed carefully. The finances are going to get dressed carefully, uh, the purchase price is going to get dressed carefully. And, and then I have to say, the mayor and the governing body have never wavered when speaking with the officials about the importance of a public plaza and how that, you know, you can't, you know, take our half the ball and make sure that happens um, in a way that is acceptable to the public. So the, that is always front and center. So whatever we're doing, we're always mindful of the need to make sure that, that, uh, public space um, is, continues to be provided for.
Thank you, Joe.
I, I would just add that after this negotiation, after this negotiation process, after we go through this conditional, the, the process that Joe just described, there's a full public vetting of this through a public process that, 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 um, the results of that, um, will, will be open to public, uh, discussion. Um, so, so we're at the beginning of this process, but it is a good beginning. So, um, I just wanted to add that as well.
Yeah, and I, and you know, I, what I was about to say to you before, um, is that, um, you know, we, the parking is going to be a part of what we have to address with any of the developers and for our town as well. Um, but it, whether the parking is onsite or offsite, all of that is going to be dependent upon, um, each of the individual developers and the plans that they submit to us as we move forward.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, I am sure you know this, but you have to always keep in mind that as new developer, if new developers come in afterwards, you're going to have to be able to tie the current parking with future parking.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, hope you can do it.
Yep, we will find a way. Thanks.
Mayor, we have time for one more.
Okay.
Uh, looks like Jenny Chapman. So Mayor, it looks like in order for her to be able to speak, she has to be promoted to a panelist.
Um, Why is that?
It's because she has an older version of Zoom. So, um, I would recommend that she use the call in number and call in. Um, only because I'm not sure if she's able to, if she's prepared to be on video and give commentary on video. And there's no way for her to tell us.
Oh. Okay, Jenny, did you hear what Emma was suggesting? Um, can you call into us?
So, so Terry normally lets her do it. She just tell her, like, make sure you turn on your, your camera, I guess, be like properly dressed or whatever.
Jenny, I'm going to text you.
All right, I will go ahead and promote her to a panelist then.
Jenny be properly ready. Okay, yeah, she's ready.
Jenny, you have to unmute.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for texting me, Mr. Hirsch, Councilman Hirsch. Um, sorry about my old version of Zoom. Uh, um, so Jenny Chapman, one, two, three Magnolia Street. Uh, I wanted to ask about, um, the potential, uh, well, the moving forward to, um, accepting Garden Homes as the, um, conditional redeveloper. Before we have a plan for what would happen, should he be awarded that, um, and sold that property? Is there a plan? Is there, um, has it been determined that there's space available? Has the DOT given us, um, clearance to close that off? Or are we just barreling ahead without any plan in place?
Okay, so I, I will turn to our, uh, attorney again, so he can answer your questions.
Thank you.
It's really important to understand how narrow the conditional designation is. We're literally just making exclusively negotiate them with them for, uh, six months. During that process, all of the issues have to be vetted. Do we get to a, a, a transaction that we find acceptable that we're willing to recommend to the governing body? Uh, and then there'll be the public vetting of that proposal. So we're not selling the land home today. We're not, you know, entering into a financial agreement today. We're not doing anything other than agreeing to negotiate with them exclusively to not, not, not negotiate with multiple people, but just them for six months in exchange for them paying for the cost, our costs to do those negotiations. That's all that's happening today.
I see, and I, I want to re, I want to say, I, I think I forgot to say that I'm not speaking for any organization with which I'm affiliated. I'm just speaking for myself. But I, I just want to put it out there that it's really important to, um, to understand the, the political, um, uh, sort of like, you know, that, that, that this is a really unpopular move. And everybody on council should be aware of that because it is, it is a political issue for you all to get on board with something that is so politically just, it just angers people and concerns people. Um, so I just, I just want to put that out there. Um, some council members, uh, reassured me that, uh, a, a thought was being put in place about backing up and thinking about using this space differently. Um, understanding that there are lots of languishing properties that were not included on the redevelopment plan at all. And no vacancy tax. Um, in fact, pushback on the vacancy tax was, was, um, you know, sort of like the response to people who've been presenting that idea for the last ten years. So I just want to put that all out there and I appreciate your time and effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. And just to be fair, you know, I do get a lot of email, positive and negative from people. So, um, I don't know, I've never counted all of the emails to see where the, the, the voices or the calls lie. But, um, I'm sure there are people who are happy with this and I'm sure there are people who have some concerns about it, just to be fair. Okay, um, I think we have to move on according to what the, uh, borough clerk said, that that would be our last person to speak in this session. We will be able to have more public comment in the other session. All right, I'm moving on to uh, the ordinances requiring a second reading. And I, before we go forward, um, I've, um, spoken with some people about, um, item twelve A. And I would like to know, um, if we could have a motion to table, uh, Councilman Hale, you're raising your hand while I'm speaking.
I was going to make the motion.
Okay, okay, go ahead. You'll save me a few sentences.
Um, I would like to make a motion to table, um, item twelve C to the next meeting.
Do I have a second?
I believe that's twelve A, Councilman, a second.
Twelve A, I'm sorry, twelve A, right, twelve A.
Second.
Okay. Um, in that case, do I, uh, borough clerk, do we now have to take a vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Why are we tabling it?
So the, the, the short answer to that is we just want to make sure that, that as written, the, the, the resolution is, um, uh, consistent and compliant with state law and municipal land lease law. And there's a thing we need a clarification on it. And rather than rush it forward, but without that clarification, we just want to make sure that we're getting it the right the first time. And we can do that, um, at the next meeting. So it's just a, a technical clarification.
Okay, yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
No.
Councilwoman Kim Chohan?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, we, we should announce that this, uh, matter is being carried. The next meeting, I believe, is September the eighth, so that the public knows when it'll be a peck on the agenda.
Thank you very much, Counselor. I appreciate, I appreciate that. So we will have this on the agenda. The matters will be clarified before the next meeting on the eighth. September
September sixth.
Sixth, okay, September sixth. Thank you. All right, in that case, um, may I have a motion to, um, go on, we'll go on to twelve B. And clerk, could you please report on advertising amending chapter two thirty land development concerning parking regulations for all zoning districts and bulk regulations and form-based residential design standards for single and two-family dwellings for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance by the Borough of Highland Park, Millsack County, New Jersey, amending chapter two thirty land development concerning parking regulations for all zoning districts and bulk regulations and residential design standards for single and two-family dwellings was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up this ordinance on final reading by title?
Move.
Second.
Any public hearing on this? Do you have any hands?
There's, uh, yes, two hands. The first is Peter Spool.
Okay.
Hi, Peter Spool, one forty six Graham Street. Um, so there's many places where the current parking language is removed and what's the replacement is almost uniformly New Jersey Administrative Code, section five, uh, twenty one. When I look at that section of the New Jersey Administrative Code, I note that for every apartment, what amounts to two parking spaces have to be set aside, as well as half a parking space for visitors. I just wanted to make sure all of you are well aware of that, as well as the public that is listening or watching.
Thank you, Peter.
Is, uh, is that the case? Do all of you understand that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That's all?
Okay, thank you. And is there, uh, you said there was another hand? Emma?
Sorry, I didn't realize that I was on mute. Yes, uh, there's also Carl Prey.
It's, it's me again. Uh, I have a question
Me again, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I am sorry. Mary Forsberg, three seventeen Denison Street.
Okay.
Um, I, I read this actually, not recently, and the, uh, I, I'm curious because it, it looked to me like it was reducing the number of parking, required parking spaces. Is that true for residential and, um, and two-family dwellings? Is that true?
So, Madam Mayor, can I answer that question?
Yes, please. Um, Chris?
Uh, so the, since the late nineties, the residential site in, right, New Jersey residential site improvement standards have been in place throughout the, um, state. Um, I think many builders were looking for uniform standards relative to residential, residential construction. And when the standards are put in place, they superseded all regulations pertaining to residential parking. So for, for the past twenty years, uh, many towns, Highland Park included, had some passages of the old ordinance referring to, and specifically, I'm Parker would be, every dwelling unit shall have two parking spaces. So for the past twenty years, that hasn't been enforced because RSIS takes precedence here. Relative to the number of parking spaces, specifically to your question, Mary. Um, in some cases, the parking requirement is reduced if you compare it to two, as it was in the late nineties. Uh, for example, Garden Apartment, one bedrooms requires one point eight. A two-bedroom, single-family house requires one point five. Uh, otherwise, all the other regulations, uh, mainly pertaining to apartments, two bedrooms, two, three bedrooms, two point one. A four-bedroom house is two and a half, five-bedroom house is three. So the numbers vary depending on the number of bedrooms of the housing type. Um, so some go down, some go up. But what this ordinance does is I call the housekeeping because we're trying to remove any references to drawing, uh, spaces per dwelling unit because it hasn't been in, um, couldn't have been enforced for the past twenty years. So just removing it and just simply refer to the state standard, uh, which again, has been in place for over twenty years.
Thank you, Chris.
So, so has there been any thought about, uh, the impact of that on Highland Park? I remember Phil George talking about, um, all the duplexes that are, have become quite expensive in Highland Park where, you know, three or four students will move in with three or four cars. And there are a lot of, I mean, there is, most property in Highland Park, Park is rental property. So if you are, go, I, I, I understand you have to adhere to state standards, but I don't know why. Well, I don't, I don't know why you can't come up with some other idea about it because I think it's going to create a lot of problems in Highland Park for a lot of people.
Um, I think the simple way to say that is I, I think a lot of people understand, myself included, and senior concerns. Uh, but we really have to comply with and work with the state universal standard, uh, which I believe, uh, within a few months, within the next year, uh, will change soon. Um, and once that happens, we'll give you an update to the community at what those parking requirements will be. Um, but we're supposed to be working with the state standard. And I think anytime there's an application for duplexes, which there aren't many, um, we can certainly raise that. we can certainly raise that issue of the suggestion that there should be additional parking for the benefit of the neighborhood and the community.
So how does?
At the planning board level.
So.
It, it could be at a board level, yes.
So how does Highland Park give Track B, which is going to be four and five-story apartment building, allow them not to have any parking at all? Zero? How is that allowed?
But I think to be clear, the
Good idea.
The redevelopment plan requires, I believe, one space per unit, which is just more or less a suggestion. It's still a deviation from RSIS, which is allowed. The RSIS has two methods of differing from the standards, which could be a de minimis, de minimis exception, or, or it can make an alternative parking standard based on a number of characteristics, one of which is urban versus suburban location availability of transit. For a commu, a community like Highland Park, I think certainly qualifies as a realistic way of reducing parking requirements.
So our attorney, Joe Baumann, is trying to weigh in there too.
Yeah, I, I know this resident continues to try and characterize what we're doing, when we're not doing it. So we don't know what the parking is going to be on site. We haven't, we haven't even presented a plan. We have a proposal, we're going to work through it. The parking isn't yet to be determined, the finance is not yet to be determined, all these things are yet to be determined. So we just, just need people to be patient and not sort of try and characterize what we're considering when it's not.
Track B has been approved.
Nothing's been approved.
Track B was before the planning board and was approved by the planning board.
Track, Track B is not, she's referring to Track B, not Track C.
Right.
B.
And, and to be clear, Track B was, a, a lower number of units was approved by the planning board. It was 16 units approved by the planning board, not the larger number of units that the redevelopment plan ca, calls for. So it was approved at 16 units, not at the increased density in the redevelopment suggestion. But again, none of that has been decided, none of that has been, has, has been put in, in stone. That's just not where we are right now.
Right. Okay, do we have another speaker?
Yes, there is Harold Sakowitz.
Please state your name and address again, Harold.
I'm trying. Harold Sakowitz, 617 South Fifth Avenue. This is a question I've been wondering about for some time. When the state has, we often say, well, the state regulations are, and then we, we name them. Must we use exactly the state regulations? I mean, I know that you've had projects in the past where you said, where you proudly said, oh, and we're going to even exceed the state requirements. So is there actually flexibility when there's a state requirement?
Exceed state requirements?
There are times when you'll say, oh, well, we're going to make this even safer than the state, than the minimums requirements of the state.
I, I don't think that's, you know, what we're talking about now.
The other direction.
Right.
No, so I, I'm just wondering, I mean, because you're saying you want to conform to the state requirements, and I, I think we don't always do that.
Yeah, I think what the planner was, was saying is that we, we need to start with complying with the state requirements. And, and, and that was, that is what this ordinance intends to do.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
It's okay. Thanks. Okay.
There are no more hands, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Emma. In that case, may I have a resolution to adopt and/or reject and advertise this ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I, I'm glad that we're getting to these amendments because redevelopment has brought it into focus that we were trying probably seven, eight years ago to modernize our code to bring it in. And we had a number of proposals with regard to general development for single and, and two-family homes that we weren't able to get through. Part of it was modernizing it to meet the RSIS standards, which actually are a little more flexible than people think. And as Mr. Cusenza says, it looks like they're going to become modernized themselves, hopefully in the next year or two, so I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
I vote yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes, and I support reducing our parking standards even further.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay. We're moving on to ordinances that require a first reading. Clerk, could you please report on advertising an ordinance amending Chapter 9 concerning the Shade Tree Advisory Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park in Middlesex County amending Chapter 9 of the Code of the Borough of Highland Park concerning the Shade Tree Advisory Committee has been introduced in writing by the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, Clerk, would you please report on introduction of flood damage prevention ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance amending the Code of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 197, flood damage prevention has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, Clerk, could you please report on advertising an ordinance prohibiting firearms in public buildings for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance prohibiting firearms in public buildings and amending the Code of the Borough of Highland Park has been introduced in writing by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
To adopt.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes, I mean, it's not all firearms, but yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda items. May I have a motion to accept consent agenda items 14A through 14U, which includes the American Rescue Plan firefighter grant?
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Sorry.
Did you get both of them?
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't say yes. Wait, wait, hold on. Can, can I, can, were we going to which?
Consent agenda.
No, I have, what, 14, was it 14A to, to, was there a?
14U, which would be the addition of the American Rescue Plan firefighter grant. Remember 14U was added? It was added this, that was the addition.
No, I do, thank you.
For the firefighters grant, for turnout gears and stuff like that.
Yeah. Yeah, I support that. Sorry, one, one second here. Okay, Michelle Richopy from the Historical Commission is here. I just wanted to recognize item 14F, the Resolution to Execute Contract with Richard Grubman Associates Incorporated for historic architectural survey along Raritan Avenue. This is a, a, amazing undertaking that has, this grant has a match from the borough that will do a survey up in and down Raritan Avenue, not for historical, but to identify the just history behind each buildings and identify the unique characteristics that kind of make up some of the buildings downtown, including some of the, you know, wide window kind of showcase storefronts. Also something that I've been in New Jersey for all but two years of my life. I've lived in New Jersey for all but two years of my, my, my life, and I have never seen something quite as strange as our pattern of one-time residential homes with the storefront box kind of built out to the sidewalk. There must have been a federal program at some point that and all the stores.
A Jersey thing.
It was a Jersey thing. And it's wonderful. And so I'm really excited about this. I just wanted to give a shout out to her and Grigina Strollia from, also from the Historical Commission, who spoke earlier on redevelopment, is also working on this. So super excited. Sorry for the delay. Yes.
Matt, I have a, may I have a question? Yes, Councilwoman. On this, this, the grant that you just spoke about, Matt, is ju, that's just going to be looking at the types of homes in Highland Park or on Raritan Avenue? Or is it going to look into that, the Napa Indian Trail that was a part of the Underground Railroad that's on Raritan Avenue?
Well, considering that Michelle and Grigina are here, Michelle can, can weigh in.
Well, she'd have to be, she'd have to be allowed to weigh in. So.
Motion to allow.
She does have her hand raised, so.
Okay.
Allow her to talk. Give me one second. Michelle?
Hi. Yeah, just to answer that really quickly so I don't take up a ton of time. It is to look at the history of the development of the Lincoln Highway through Highland Park and significant sites related to that, which would go back to Native Americans in the area who originated that trail that then later became the Lincoln Highway. I don't know about the history related to the Underground Railroad, but if there is history that exists related to that, I would love to know about it. And the architectural historians that we're working with hopefully will be able to look into that and uncover it as well. And yeah, so I hope that answers the question.
So I just want to add to that. It's a little off topic, but since you're all bringing this up.
It's totally on topic.
We, 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 Matt and I have started having conversations with the Arts Commission and with Mitra Lundie, who has written a book on the Underground Railroad so that we can better identify where the Underground Railroad passed and perhaps have a, I don't want to talk too much about it till it becomes more real, but perhaps have some form of notification about Harriet Tubman's path through across the Raritan River. Councilwoman.
I'm not going to go too far into this, but you don't have to go too far to look. Back in 2002, 2003, the state had identified the Underground Railroad along with the Napa Indian Trail. It's in the state archives. Secretary of State Regina Thomas was one, one of the persons that led the walk through Highland Park and from the river.
Right. So we're going to try to pursue that further with the Arts Commission. So did we get all the votes in on this?
We don't have Matt Hirsch's vote on the consent agenda.
No, I think I said yes, didn't I?
No.
No.
He said yes. Okay. Jen, do you have that?
Got it.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the resolutions that require a separate reading. This is Resolution 822209 to designate 232 Raritan Avenue LLC, a garden homes entity as the conditional developer for property identified as Track C in the 2021 Downtown redevelopment plan and to authorize an interim cost and conditional designation agreement. May I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
There is a lot to be discussed, as we've heard from several people who have called in tonight. There is a, an enormous amount of opportunity present here, and there's just a lot to talk about as far as the future of these sites. So I am, I am a yes, but I do hope the, I, I, I do hope Garden Homes is here tonight. I'm not sure if they are or not, but I hope they are beginning to hear even some of the early feedback before we even know anything that anybody's talking about. So, yes. Very exciting, yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes, and I'd just like to add, like they, like it says in the unconditional agreement, anything can happen between that time. Yes. Like it has happened in the past, so yes.
Thank you. All right, I'm making the following appointments tonight. Mark Lesko to the Sustainable Highland Park Committee, Dwayne Harry to the Council on Aging, Margaret Ingate to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, Crossing Guards Karen Arons, Catherine Tiochary, Carol Gordon, Terrence Milne, Lucille Morris, Charlene Rayside, Jacqueline Rhine, Deborah Riddick Smith, Elizabeth Rosner, Shirley Rousseau, and Fatfania Sekalukas. May I have a motion to confirm?
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
We have a, we have another one starting at Bartle this fall, and I know many of, many of these wonderful crossing boats, so enthusiastically, yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
I will be appointing tonight two members to the planning board. Paul Linares as a Class Four, and Paul has served on the planning board for many years. And Scott Brescher as a Class Two to the planning board. Scott, too, in his capacity for the borough, has served on the planning board for many years as well. All right, we're moving into the second public participation. There are three minutes allotted per speaker on any item subject to a 9:00 PM conclusion prior to our work session. Jen, I will need you to talk to let us know when three minutes are up. So if you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the raise hand button on the application. Please unmute yourself by pressing star six. The borough administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your Please begin by telling us your first and last name, as well as your address. Again, if you'd like to speak about a topic on, about any topic, please press star nine or the raise hand button now.
Mayor, first we have Carl Prey.
Okay.
Mary Forsberg, three seventeen Denison Street. I am interested in the, in Resolution eight dash twenty-two two oh five about the contract for the revaluation of forty-four complex commercial properties in the Borough of Highland Park. I, I haven't really heard anything about the revaluation. I'm really quite interested in how forty-four properties were selected for, to be looked at specially since there are a hundred, according to the data from the tax assessor, there are a hundred and seventy-five commercial properties, six industrial and fifty-four apartments, apartment properties, and yet only forty-four are being considered for, for more complex than anything else. I would think that a lot of these apartment complexes are pretty complicated. I have this, I have this vague memory, and I meant to ask Matt Hirsch, Matt Hirsch about this. I, I sort of remembered a council meeting that there was some discussion of the fact that commercial properties in Highland Park, apartments, commercial, industrial, have to every year submit their revenue and expenditure information to the assessor in order to determine what their actual tax value is. It's, it's done differently. I do know it is done differently from the way commerce, from the way residential property is done. So I'm curious about how, like, why only forty-four to start with? And what criteria was used to, to select them?
So I'm going to ask, first I'll ask Councilwoman Kim Cho Han if she is aware of the situation with the forty-four properties for the tax revale.
Yes, yes, I am. So the forty-four properties are mostly the large garden properties that we have in town and, and some other, you know, specially designed structures that we wanted to select a se- a separate firm for. And you are correct, those commercial properties have to submit their tax returns for that. So, and it's also a reason, so a normal, a normal residential firm sometimes doesn't have the specialty in those areas. And speaking honestly, a lot of our apart, garden apartments are way undervalued in town where they should be. So we wanted to, you know, they could really, you know, you look at some of these large garden, they have staff on, on, you know, on payroll to go for appeals and try to still lowball us. So we wanted to really get the most accurate number when it comes to revale for those forty-four garden apartments. So. But their specialty apart, mostly are the large garden apartments.
But it's called complex commercial properties, and there is an actual line for apartments. So why is it, why isn't it, of the fifty-four apartments in town that are more than four apartments? Why, why is it worded that way?
When they are.
I don't understand your question.
The question is, the resolution words it as forty-four complex commercial properties. There is a specific line in the assessor's information that says there are a hundred and seventy-five commercial properties in town. So why is it worded commercial properties? Why isn't it garden? If that's the case, then why aren't we looking at something more? I mean, if there are commercial properties that should be looked at, why aren't they included in this?
So I, if I could help answer that, and Stephanie, you, you can chime in. We have learned over the last year or so that a good number of the apartment complexes, garden apartment complexes in Highland Park have been undervalued and hence not paying the taxes that they probably should be paying. And so what this hopes to do is bring those apartment complexes up to a valuation of worth as opposed to an undervalued amount of money. That will, that will help all the other taxpayers in town.
I, I, I know, I understand that, that apart, some of these apartment complexes have been undervalued. But we, according to the assessor, we have a hundred and seventy-five commercial properties. Does that mean that the commercial properties are just gonna be thrown in with all the residential? And, and I'm sure there are some commercial properties that make a lot of money and are probably also equally undervalued.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask our Borough Attorney to answer that, and then we have to move on to the next person.
Why don't we just, why don't we just?
Matt, I'm sorry, I asked the Borough Attorney to speak.
No, no, just, but, but, but a written response, I think would be.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Ed?
I was just gonna say, Mary, every property in the borough, whether it's residential or non-residential, commercial, is gonna be reevaluated, okay? These are the tricky ones. These are the most difficult ones that were pulled out of the overall revaluation contract because they're special properties that need special attention. So everybody, all the hundred number that you mentioned are gonna be reevaluated, and they're gonna be melded into the new tax base. Every one of them will be part of the revaluation.
Okay, let's move on to the next.
Doesn't really answer my question, but that's all right.
Do we have another question? Speaker?
I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Then we are going to.
Stephanie's hands raised.
I'm sorry? Oh, Stephanie.
Yeah. Sorry, I just wanted to, to everybody that's here, we just had a finance committee meeting, and I asked Terry, because we just passed the resolution for this from, I asked Terry to do one meeting on Zoom and one meeting in person. So trust me, we're not gonna, we're trying, we're going to communicate as much as possible regarding this whole revale situation. I just wanted to mention that. Thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Stephanie. All right, we're moving on now. We have a five-minute recess. I'm assuming council members want to take that recess. I see heads going yes. Okay, so then we will meet back here at eight forty-seven. Thank you.
Very specific.
I'm looking at the clock.
My clock says eight forty-six.
Yeah, Borough, Borough Hall time is eight forty. Sorry. Quite a quartz hanging on the wall with a battery. Javier, Jenny, and Rebecca, if you, if you're still listening. I had a really nice experience coming from, I was doing, I was doing, I was working on my laptop at Pinot, not drinking. But, and just having a delightful time in this nice summer weather. Hopped on a scooter and rode over to Borough Hall, and it was absolutely wonderful. And I want more of that. And I hope this discussion leads to more of that. It's supposed to cool off tonight, everybody, so hopefully you're staying warm and hydrated. Sunscreen, wear a hat. I sound like my mom, but it's true.
I've had a lot of clients have to go to the hospital for dehydration because of their medication with this heat wave.
Yeah, it's been, it's been, it's been really brutal. I mean, we had a little reprieve, and now we're just back, back out of it. Actually, Tara, I should talk with you. Code red, not necessarily locally.
I did send you an email about the, the dog situation.
I didn't see it.
Sometimes service animals.
Oh, oh, that, that situation, yes.
Yeah, people think that because they go online and certify their dog as a service animal, that doesn't work in New Jersey. In New Jersey, it has to, you have to have a letter from a doctor who has a prescriber's license in order for it to be considered a service dog. Because anybody can go online and pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars and certify their pet, and their pet not, isn't really a service animal.
Right, right, okay. I think, I think the whole, I think that.
But we do need more work on what you're discussing.
Yeah, I mean, for anybody listening, if you've been downtown, we have had a couple living really in an encampment under the pavilion, the farmer's market. I just, you know, I really want to emphasize how many people were helping them from multiple borough agencies, including houses of worship. I spent time talking with them twice. Just to, you know, and I know that they.
I offered them food. They wouldn't take it, but they did take the cold drinks.
Yeah. Yeah, so, but I believe their, their situation has been positive, so that's good news. Meaning, meaning that they're sheltered.
Mayor, I've been going crazy. My grandson has been gone since Tuesday. I don't get him back till Thursday.
Oh, I, I know how hard it is.
Everybody said I would enjoy the break, but no, after the first twenty-four hours, I just missed him.
Yeah, but it'll be nice to see him again.
Yes, it will. And I'm sorry, I'm off screen, but I'm trying to eat dinner really quickly.
Today would have been Jerry Garcia's eightieth birthday.
Wow.
I'm eating too, but that's a big one right there.
Or yesterday, oh, yesterday, I'm sorry. Still.
Today is my grandson's eleventh month.
Nice.
Who's Jerry Garcia?
You're kidding. Grateful Dead?
The guitar player for this.
Grateful Dead guitar player?
Okay.
Elsie, you're such a good girl.
Me as either.
The guy I followed for a month and a half? Living out of my car?
Oh, my God!
The whole reason my husband has a diagnosis?
Now I gotta go Google this, this, this Jerry Garcia guy.
It's, it'll be an entertaining Google for you.
Yeah, he also is an ice cream flavor and a, makes some great pies.
I have a couple of, I have a couple of his ties, Matt. They're really good. And the Beatles ties, too. Same company.
I think it's Cherry Garcia.
Yes.
And by the way, the lead singer for Hey Bulldogs is my cousin, so make sure you're all there. He's excellent.
All right, there you go.
I love Pat.
So do I. And it's a good thing it was canceled because Pat now, he has COVID right now.
Yeah, yeah, so, no, that's what the rain dates were for, so it's great. I would have been really bummed. Amazing, Hey Bulldog, and I worked with Pat. I waited tables with him in New Brunswick twenty years ago. And he could sing then, too.
Yes, he can.
Actually sang, had really good harmony. We had really good harmony.
He's, he's very, very talented.
Okay, there's Stephanie. Do we have everybody? Yes. All right, Jen.
I never heard of one of these songs this guy sing.
All right, you know what that means. We're gonna have to have.
The next time there's a show.
That's okay, I'll pass.
We're gonna have to have a Grateful Dead night.
That's okay.
Okay, so Jen, you're there. Emma, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right, then let's, since we've got everybody back, let's move on. We have one work session item, Elsie, I believe, oh, no, Phil, it's yours, sorry. The Sustainable Highland Park Adopt a Drain Program. Did you want to fill us in?
It's, it's a base, basically an FYI question, or FYI thing. The Adopt a Drain Program is fairly widespread nationwide over the last ten years. Basically, people in the neighborhood will adopt a storm drain. And, you know, and keep it clean and report any maintenance issues. It, it sounds like, you know, they're really just assisting DPW. But actually, when we discussed it at Sustainable Highland Park and a little bit at Public Works last week, it's actually to try and get the citizenry to understand the importance of stormwater, and especially now with the state really pressing upon us with stormwater management, how important it is to make sure that our whole stormwater system, what it is, how it works, where it is, what it's made of, increases consciousness of it so that people are more aware of where the stormwater goes, its importance, and the importance of trying to avoid excessive pollution of it, since it does drain straight to the river. The program is simply, you know, people sign up for it. There's a program that keeps track of it, so eventually it builds up a database of all the points in town. We have a lot of them located on GIS, but it will assist it in that process, which of course assists us in the water sewer utility as well. Little bit of help to DPW in doing it and also monitoring it. You see what we have, a crew that's constantly jetting, you know, jet can, is going around jetting them. But this way, we have more of an eyes-on situation. So it's been up and running for a little while, just to let council know that we discussed, discussed it briefly in a work session quite a while back that they were considering it. We do have it moving along now, and we're, we're picking up a few members every week because I adopted the drain right out front at the corner of Jackson and South Second, but I gotta get my name on the scroll. And that's all, just any questions on it was just to introduce it and let you know what it is.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Phil? Oh, I see some hands up. Okay, Tara and then Matt Hale.
Um, Phil, since we, our last work session or our meeting for PSW Public Works, I've had a few residents ask me, in the apartment complex where there's drains, can people adopt those? A few of my neighbors were asking, or if they're run by, taken care of by the complex. And if they are, then they'll just look for ones outside of the complex.
That's a good question. Generally, yes, they can, but I'll ask S H P if there's any particular protocol just to let management know, you know, this is our program, we're doing it. I believe it was circulated some, some time ago, but I'll check with Tina and make sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Matt Hale?
So how much does it cost to adopt a drain?
It doesn't cost anything, just work gloves and a garbage bag every once in a while.
So it's a volun, so it's, the effort is to get, to get residents to voluntarily clean up. It's not like a.
Correct.
Okay, I miss, I'm, thank you.
So it's not like.
It's not like you pay two hundred and fifty dollars to have it cleaned or whatever.
You adopt it by giving it loving.
Adopt it by sweat equity. There we go.
Sweat equity, correct.
Or loving, loving.
Loving and caring.
Yeah, and then, and then Sustainable Highland Park keeps track of, of the, of the information. I think there's a service. Uh, I think there's a service, service that actually does it um and puts it on a local database and also a nation, a national database. And that's what increases our um accountability here in town.
Okay, any other questions for Phil on Adopt a Drain? In that case, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Hi, everybody.
National Night Out next week, make sure you show up.
We will be there.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Dead show, I did this summer.
Yes. Thank you all.
Hi, everybody.